I should have this memorized at this point. Okay, this open meeting of the Men and Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 24th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's orders suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Men and Select Board is convening by telephone conference, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Back to you, Mark.
You. Still no Lonnie, so there's, can't start the meeting yet.
Okay, it's good because I'm looking something up, so he can stall. No catch.
Just gonna say.
Oh, that's funny.
It's right here.
Classic.
Hi. I'm just checking the fall STM warrant from a couple, from a normal year. I feel like we might be missing a couple.
Okay.
But it might, it probably is just my paranoia. Yep. Did the buckets already. Affordable housing, yep. Maybe not, I mean, maybe it's just my imagination.
I added the Board of Health to the.
Does it have to be the whole chart or can it just be theirs?
I think we have to do the whole chart every year.
But didn't we already do it?
Yeah, but this is for this spring.
Yeah, but wasn't part of the thing we left theirs out of the last one? Just them?
We did. The last.
It's been a year.
So this is this new year.
You know, it's been a whole year. It's been a, you know.
I know, I had to print a couple of, because I was a little bit like, wait a minute, what are we doing?
Still catching up on everything.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't see it on here, I was just thinking about, I was thinking about our funds.
Our what?
Oh, I was just, I was thinking about free cash and I was thinking about our funds and, you know. Just feeling like, I always feel like, you know, that I'm missing something, just like today, like hurry up and add this, and then you're like, duh, you already did that.
Uh, but this is the very first rough draft, so.
No, I know, I just, I, I find myself doing things twice these days because I just.
I know.
Chaotic. Okay, so, did we text, did you text him?
I did, I did.
What's he doing?
I did, um, three minutes ago. Give him five more minutes and this meeting's done.
Yeah, well, I was gonna suggest we actually meet next week anyway.
Oh geez.
I was.
I just talked a couple of minutes ago, so he should be getting on, because he told me he'd see me in 10 minutes, so.
Okay, maybe he's on a phone call. Yeah, well, because the warrant closes on the 14th, right Laura?
The 18th.
Oh, okay, so I was freaking out, because I'm like, we don't meet until the 16th, and what if there's changes? But if it's the 18th, then I'm fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Want this meeting to be done by 6:30, so.
Fine by me, just look at the warrant now, you should be familiar with the articles, we've done the same thing three times for this one.
And I'm not gonna go through the budget, because we did that last week.
Just opened the one, didn't we?
We just, well, we opened it, but it's closing end of next week, so. But there's nothing on there yet except the regular stuff and stuff that we carried over from the fall, which we already reviewed in the fall. So, I just got the new bylaw stuff from Keller Williams that they're working on for 16, and that's not done yet, so I won't have it till Thursday, so. We really want planning to take the lead on that anyway. I know it's dark, but I just couldn't. Sit at the table, there you go. Well, for entertainment, I have a magic eight ball here. Anybody wanna ask it a question? What is the weather tomorrow? Outlook good, excellent, I need that life right now.
That's accurate, that's accurate.
Good, well, this, oh, good. Good to know. What is the likelihood we're gonna be done by 6:30 on this meeting? Outlook not so good.
Oh no.
Well, there you have it.
You know, it might be over before it even starts, so. I could just do it all myself, I would. The rule suspended from the state of emergency where I can just do it.
I don't believe that's ever gonna be one that you could have, but, you know. Unless you make yourself the town manager right now, then you could, manager could do it.
No, thank you. Nothing?
He'll be on in a minute.
6:50, I'm done.
Okay.
Be on by.
Yeah, this should be very quick.
Yeah, there's nothing. There's literally nothing that should take more than two minutes each. Well, the warrant a little bit, but.
Well, like I said, I don't think I'm even gonna read through it this week, because all it is right now is stuff that we've carried over. The new stuff that we'd get in hasn't even come in yet, so it's, we know what's on there.
Yeah, and if you don't have to, then it's, there's no point, because Chris will want yours.
Right, and we're gonna go through it anyway, you know, on the 16th, that's, you know, and then we can invite anybody who has an article to be there that night too, so then we're all good. We can hear you.
I think we've got Lonnie.
We can't hear him.
Sorry, everyone, my bad.
All right.
All right, so, citizen statements and petitions, anyone have anything? Correspondents to the board, I don't think we have any. Consider full-time police officer Sean Malone.
Okay, so, we had an open position in November, we had an officer who left to go to a bigger department locally. We posted it externally and internally, went through a process with the sergeants, and came up with a candidate list. We was very tight, we had a lot of good applicants, and the background was what drew him apart. Sean Malone was chosen based on the background and the whole process. He's a recent graduate of Fitchburg State University, comes to us with a bachelor's degree, he's working on his master's degree, and he just recently completed the academy in September. So, he's actually on to, he's in, on Andrea's computer right now, because he's here right now, he was here for the day. So I'd recommend that he be appointed as Menon's next full-time police officer.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Sorry, a little bit of specificity there.
Hold on one second.
It's to be a full-time officer at step one, pay rate of $1,029.69 per week.
Hold on a sec. I didn't have the motions open, I'm sorry. That was what I was missing. I moved to appoint Sean Malone to the position of full-time police officer, step one, at a pay rate of $1,029.69 per week.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, Tanyo, aye.
Real aye. Okay, congratulations, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Usually you get to have a picture and all that, but it's really not worth doing a screenshot of this. Not a good idea.
I don't even know if he can figure out how to get the camera on over there with Andrea, so.
Won't do that. Next.
We'll take a picture when we swear him in tomorrow, we'll put it on Facebook.
There you go, perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Bye to you.
Okay, consider appointment, part-time library assistant Jennifer O'Brien.
So hello, how is everybody?
Hi Andrew.
Hi. So, we conducted the search for two new library assistants, that was following the retirements of Martha Grady and Paula Pearlman. Just wanted to take a moment to recognize both Martha and Paula for their many years of service to the Taft Public Library. Martha worked at the Taft for 23 years, and Paula Pearlman for 21. They were the heart of the library, and we appreciate everything they did in service to the community, and we wish them well in their retirement. We're excited to welcome Jennifer O'Brien, Jennifer actually works part-time as a media center paraprofessional over at the Nittmuck Regional High School. I don't know if you want me to talk about Christine Barnett as well?
Sure.
Seeing as it's the two positions, Christine is a local business owner, a graphic designer, she also works part-time for the Menon Upton Town Crier. The search, we did both externally and internally, of course, and had quite a few candidates, I think, close to 40 candidates, applicants, excuse me. We're excited to welcome Jennifer O'Brien and Christine Barnett pending your approval. Like I said, they both live and work in the area, they know the community well through the schools and their individual outreach, and we believe that they will be excellent additions to the staff, and we recommend that they be appointed by the board.
Two great candidates.
Yeah, definitely.
Excuse me, I moved to appoint Jennifer O'Brien to the position of part-time library assistant, 10 hours per week at a pay rate of $16.83 per hour.
Second, all in favor?
Tanyo, aye.
Real aye. Very good, the next one?
Move to appoint Kristen Barnett to the position of part-time library assistant, 10 hours per week at a pay rate of $16.50 per hour.
Second, all in favor?
Tanyo, aye.
Real aye, very good, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you so much.
What's the discrepancy in the pay rate?
Uh, discrepancy is based on experience, because Jennifer has library media experience and Christine does not.
Got it, understood, thanks.
Yeah, thank.
Thank you, thanks Andrew.
All right, thank you so much.
M budget.
So, there are no changes, we don't need to go through the budget again, it's the same as it was the last time I presented it to you. We, I will tell you that we, I just had a follow-up meeting this morning with Maya, I might be able to trim a little bit more off our health insurance savings, not a ton, but something, which is pretty great, that never happens, and so, you know, other than that, you know, we had a meeting last week that you were both at, so I don't need to catch you up on that, we attended the FinCom meeting in Upton. So, really, I'm just looking for some direction now, if you would like me to modify the budget. As you know, I had added the 50/50 number of $315,000 over the board's approved school budget for Merzda last year, and that is what's currently in the budget, which nets them about $44,000. So I'm trying to get direction as if you want me to zero it out, as in, we're, we'll take even that $44,000, or do you want me to leave the 50/50 number in there for now?
My preference is to, is to zero it out at this point.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so I'll take that 44.
I mean, I would say let's zero it up, but I don't think we should go and just spend it just yet, you know what I mean? Make sure, maybe just put it out to the side.
Right, for now, all I'm going to do is put it into FinCom Reserve, which is what I use as the balancer anyway, and, you know, we'll see how that goes, obviously that 44 is, it's a lot to us, so it could, you know, which is sad, but it's true, it's a lot of money to us, and I certainly could use it. In my ideal place would be in highway capital depreciation to start something, and hopefully round that up to 50 somehow with the savings from health insurance, and at least get started there. That's what I'd like to do with it, but we can talk about that in the future.
Okay, thank you.
We have the ATM warrant on Lonnie, we talked a little bit before we started the meeting about the need to go through this, and it's, a lot of this stuff is, if not all of it, is recurring items that we probably don't really need to go through yet.
Right, I was gonna either suggest we meet again next week, but now I know we have another meeting on the 16th. I actually think we should wait until the 16th to really go through it, when we also have Chris. Everything that's on there is something that we already reviewed either as a fall article, or the ones we do every ATM at this point. There's nothing new, we do have some new bylaw stuff that is coming in for the warrant, it's not in yet, so we might as well do it all at once and plan on that for the 16th, and that way you'll still have time to modify for a couple of days, and people will still have time to get things in till the 18th. So, I really, right now, it's draft form, this is really just as a reminder to people that if they have articles, they should be telling us, so we can put placeholders on, so we can get the process in motion.
Okay. Very good. And, meeting minutes?
Oh, hold on. No. Are they? Those in here?
I actually haven't looked at them yet, so maybe we should hold off.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't see them. Hey, so, maybe this is the wrong place to ask this question. I did notice that, I was just, I don't know where, where I, I guess it was, do we not, is it, was it our minutes, or maybe some, maybe I was looking in another department about getting the minutes on the web? Do we need help doing that or anything like that, or? I just feel like, on the Menon MA site? I just feel like, if you don't mind, just give me one second.
Yeah. We're ahead of schedule.
Oh, sorry, forgot we changed the name. Yeah, so, minutes.
We probably have a ton of minutes that need to be approved and posted, because we've been like this.
Yeah, they, there's a lot, okay, so, we, no need to talk about it here, we can talk about it after, but there's, there's quite a bit missing.
Well, what we should do, because we either run out of time or whatever, we tried for a while to add a couple to every meeting, and then what happens is we're like, nah, we don't wanna do that. We should just pick one meeting and do a whole bunch, you know what I mean, when all of us have a free afternoon, and just crank out a whole.
That's fine too, I'm just saying that on the website, we're missing a lot.
Yeah, they're not uploaded to the website, right?
Well, we have to, well, typically, we approve that, we approve and then upload, we don't upload in draft form, we could.
Just have a peek, you'll see what I mean.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah. And, yeah, that's, I just, I just happened to notice it, because I was searching for some minutes from something else, and was looking at, I wanted to see something for hours, and it wasn't, and it wasn't there from cover. But yeah, no, I agree, I can make myself available to do that anytime.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's just daunting, but yeah, we should just crank it out and get it done and get them uploaded.
Cool. Okay, anything else?
Uh, no, oh, other than, and I know this is probably, we can talk about this at another meeting too, but I just touched on Jay's email about chairs, I mean, my opinion would be bring your own, if we can throw 50 out there that he offered, and for this, for the annual town meeting, then I think that that's just reasonable in case somebody doesn't need one, that they're there.
I agree.
Okay, cool.
And we covered sound last time, I think that's fine too.
Yeah, Dan, yeah, Dan, I think does a great job.
Yeah.
Are we gonna, are we gonna record it?
No, you don't.
No, okay, oh, there's Jay. Oh, you got your Santa guys.
Which one is Jay, is it the one with the hat, the other one with the hat?
Yeah, well, we take Christmas decorations down at all, so. It's a virtual background, it's not real. Different way in my kitchen. Yeah, chairs, I figured we do bring your own, I just wanted to ask, because if you wanna rent them, somebody's gotta do that. I'll talk to Dan Flurry about the sound, I don't think that's an issue, and I'll find out cost and stuff. I don't, I don't see any way to record it unless you've got some kind of recording equipment, maybe you can get the drone to record it, but I don't think you'll get sound that way.
No, yeah, I just didn't, I didn't know even if you wanted to do like.
Because the other thing is, we're not gonna have a projector, we're not gonna have a screen, so that makes bylaws a little more challenging when people get up and try to change them at town meeting, but we'll deal with it, like we did before, we had projectors and screens, so.
It is possible to just do one laptop that is running a Teams meeting that can be recorded, like this is, you know what I mean, and then at least you could hear the questions in the discussion, but, again, maybe not even necessary, if we don't even need to.
I mean, we typically don't record town meetings in the past, so it's not, I mean, I don't, there was a time when Cable 8 used to come and record them, but I don't think that's happened in quite some time now.
I guess that, maybe, you know what, that's probably what I'm thinking of, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're getting old, forgetting Lonnie, that happens.
Back in the old days, before we had gray hair, Jay?
I, it's blonde, not gray, just remember that. All right.
All righty.
Can I ask a question on the school piece, just since I'm here?
Oh, I don't know, you have a couple of minutes, so.
Well, so the basic question, you're gonna, you're gonna level fund us at what the Board of Selectmen approved last year, not what the voters approved, correct?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying, so in essence, you're taking away last year's override and putting it into the town budget.
For the moment.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, like I said, I just wanna make sure that I have a working document and I know where my bottom is.
I did send you that total, correct?
Yes, and it basically was the same as what, what I had, you know.
Hold on, what are the, what are those numbers, wait a sec, so, all right, hold on, I'm glad you asked that, because I guess maybe I'm misunderstanding something here.
I'll email it to you right now, hold on.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you basically without giving you an exact to the dollar, last, this current year's funding from the town amendment is about $10,600,000. The board approved $10,389, something like that, 339, somewhere in there, and then there was a 271 override. What Kim is saying now, what I've gotten from her, is that you're gonna fund us at the, what the board approved before the override was passed, which would be $10,329 or some, what is it, $10,300,000, right?
Yeah, I just sent it again.
Yeah.
It's 10, so, the last year's budget was 10,329, our proposed budget is 10,644,113, which is an increase of $315,000, or a 3% increase over what the board approved last year. Their request right now, as it stands, includes a 200, includes the $271,000 override which was passed, plus an additional $600,000.
We're saying we're not gonna give the override?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
And I think it's important to note that, that's where we are at the moment.
No, I understand, you know, yeah, I just wanna under, and we don't have to talk about it right now, Kim, I'll probably give you maybe a call tomorrow or something, just, just so I understand this in my head better.
So, well, this, it's, this is, it's pretty straight, so their request is, what, 890 or 980, Jay?
It's, I think the net increase is about 860, 880.
Okay, what we brought in total in two and a half and new growth is 630, so that includes the override. So their request right now at 890 requires that we give them every bit of two and a half, every bit of new growth, and then take 230 from our operating budget, their request as it is right now.
Okay.
If we give them the override amount, we'd have to voluntarily cut our budget already, $300,000.
Well, but Kim, in reality, if you gave us the full $10,600,000, and then you're gonna take away the 40, 43,000 was the extra that you were going, right?
Yeah, but the problem with this scenario, Jay, as I told you before, is I don't have it.
So you're, are you, you're saying you're gonna take away the 43,000 and fund us the $10,600,000, or you're gonna fund us the $10,300,000?
Well, that was my question, no, I'm gonna fund you, at, right now, what I have you at is 315 over last year's, which is the 10,6, which is same thing, I mean, I don't know if we're giving you the extra 44, or if I'm netting that to zero and giving you the difference, that's up to them. I don't know, but what I can tell you for sure is, I don't have it anywhere to even get to that 10,6 plus 3 number, I don't have it. Even with us, even with us eliminating six months' worth of dispatch, I don't have it. I mean, we literally got rid of a department this year, and I still can't subsidize that request within our operating budget, I don't have.
I'm not asking you to kill the town.
Which is why, I mean, I think going override is the way to go, so.
Okay, I gotta get my simple head around it.
Yeah, go ahead.
That 271,000 was an override that we voted last year.
Correct.
That's in this budget, right?
Correct.
That's in next year's budget, or we're taking that away, because I don't, and again, my.
Actually, Lonnie, I think if I understand what Kim is saying, and what Mark was saying when he says zero it out, meaning that right now, the net increase was over $10,600,000, was it about 43,000? He's saying, take the 43, just level fund what we funded in FY21.
That's the way, right, I understood it, but then when you, when you just asked about taking the override money away, somebody agreed for a second.
I don't, I don't have another $300,000 to.
Yeah, 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 I get it.
You didn't plant the money tree yet?
I'm trying, I am trying, I, we got three proposals coming in tomorrow, bring us across, I mean, we need the money, so, there's no question, so.
So basically, for my working base, I should be using $10,600,000, whatever this year's current amount is, I should use that as a, level funding is what you're talking about for next year at this point, and I understand it's still subject to change, we have time. Because when we certify in two weeks, our certification is the 15th, we're gonna certify a number, we don't, at that point, say this is how much is an override, this is how much is this, because that's really not our call, that's the town's call after you get our assessment.
Right, but I just, I wanna go out in advance again as saying, which, we're in a different position financially this year than maybe we have been in in previous years, it's been a difficult financial year, and I don't have even a number, like last, I mean, to, to even meet halfway on, to avoid doing that, I don't have it. If you're talking about $100,000, maybe, but $300,000, $600,000, that's, that's. And I know Upton does have it, and they could probably do a moderate budget this year, but we would really struggle on our side, and so, you know, my personal preference is to see you go for whatever it is you need and take it to the taxpayers, and I hope you get it, right? That, because otherwise, it will literally force us to cannibalize our own budget, and that will be catastrophic for us. I, that's just.
Right, so I guess it just needs to be understood that if an override fails, and we do, can't do anything else, you're probably talking at us laying off 30% of our staff, so. Kind of saying we devastate one or the other, or we come to a compromise after an override.
Hundred percent, but I would rather us both cross that bridge after the taxpayers say they don't want it, right? So, I, and I, I understand that some of it'll be cuts on your side, but like I told you on the phone, when you're talking about $300,000 or $600,000 from the town's budget, you're talking about an entire department, in a budget of that size is like the fire department. It's not like a clerk in the office and five people, we have 45 full-time staff total, you're talking about a huge, a huge sacrifice, so.
Not arguing with you on it, I understand where you're coming from.
If we, right, if we had other pockets, you know, the only other potential, and I don't even wanna consider it, is that we, to take it from stabilization, but maybe you take some from your leftover E and D, and maybe we, for the year, get through, who knows, right? But, I mean, operationally, I mean, I'm way more concerned this year than I have been in the previous years, I don't have it. And I, that's why right from the beginning of this, I said it's like an exercise of futility, I'm not going through the motions of finding where we could find, I don't have it.
Right.
So, and before we start, you know, the sky is falling, you know, this is, how, I, let's get there, so.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I just try to get. Okay, yeah, like I said, I just tried to get, so I know, you know, what I'm working with for numbers, so I, we have a base.
Okay.
So I'll go on that premise for now, until I hear otherwise.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Went one minute over, Mark, sorry, you know, you got me on my soapbox.
It's my fault, yeah, and I seem to be doing that to a lot of people these days, so why not?
I didn't help either.
No, it's good, actually, because I'm sure a lot of people are thinking the same thing, Lonnie, like, how can the, how can the town take away this much money from the school, but the fact is, we don't, it's not, we don't have it. Like, it's not as if I have it anywhere, so.
I don't.
Well, we never take away money.
We're taking away half of new, we're taking away the new growth, we're not taking away their override.
Correct, we're not taking away, right, we're taking, right, we're just.
We're just not funding new growth right now.
Correct.
Right, as opposed to the fifty-fifty number, we're getting zero, that's.
We can't, well, that's, I mean, we can't afford it, I said to this to Lonnie the other day, we're writing a check that we can't afford anymore, right? If we don't have our, if our revenues and our receipts don't go up substantially, we can't continue to afford to keep writing that check each year, and so we're at a crossroad. About how we're gonna handle this, and maybe other towns are in better financial positions, but we're not one of them, and so. You know, sadly, that's the state we're in, and that's not gonna change for us, so even if an override passes this year, you know, I'll say the same thing, go for the whole thing like you did a couple of years ago. Honestly, it makes no difference to me whether we're doing it this year or every single year going forward, right?
Well, the goal is not to do it every year going forward.
Because I, I, next year, we're not gonna be any better off, right, so.
Well, so I've been doing town budgets since nineteen ninety-eight, and every year is a difficult year, so for the last twenty-four years, it's a difficult year, so it never changes, I mean.
No, I know, but I mean, I've never been as nervous as I am right now, in all, in my twenty years this year of doing it, um, this budget is, there's nothing left in it.
At least we can brighten your day, though.
Yeah, it's like the first time for everything.
Okay.
All righty, I'm motioning, we have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Tanyo, aye.
Real aye. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Goodnight.
Thanks.
See ya.